Alright, so let's go into our agenda, which is, I just dropped it. Somehow, I know that it was here, but it just left me. Sorry. Is this it? amended agenda. How did you leave? There you are. So, um, our budget. The first item is the approval of the, um, annual budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So last, um, last month, we introduced it. This month, it'll be the approval of it. Um, if there are any changes or suggestions, uh, we have time to make it. But, um, it should be pretty final. We went through everything, so, um, but if you had any questions, um, now's the time. Reference to the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Is the attached document just of like a sample of reference? Because the attached document is for twenty-twenty-one, I think.
You know, when you got that I just sent you today, Hillary is for amending the budget. The current budget. The one for the, uh, budget you'd gotten previously for next year's budget. That was the
Twenty-two, twenty-one.
That's in the big notebook. Tonight, we're introducing the one I sent out to you late today, which is to amend the current budget.
Okay.
But, uh, the big notebook that we went through.
Right, right, right. So the attachment that was in with the documents that you sent this evening?
Yes, that's for the amending this year's budget.
Okay.
That's on the agenda as well.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two, two, yeah, two different, uh, cycles.
Right, the budget, um, discussion that you've had, the only change that's occurred since the last, um, meeting is we received our, uh, trash bids today from Bates. Uh, they were the only company to bid. They went up, um, a small amount from costing us eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars annually to a hundred and four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty cents. So an increase of twelve thousand dollars. Um, primarily, they equate that to the gas issues. Um, obviously, but we did not, unfortunately, we didn't get any other bids. I, um, courted, um, the company in Riverdale Park and they had a truck issue that they had and capacity issue, they had some trucks on order, they've been backordered, so they didn't believe that they had the capacity. And then, um, I also courted Republic. But, um, unfortunately, they did chose not to respond either, so, um.
I would love to check out waste management.
Yeah, they did chose not to respond either. I, and part of that, I think, is because of our size with the big companies. They're, they're not so excited to jump into the, to the size. But I can ask why they, you know, why they didn't bid or tried to go back to them.
Hmm. One oh-four. I don't have my phone.
It's like an eight and a half percent increase?
Yeah, and the, the per cost, I can tell you by, um, per resident, I can tell you the cost. It is twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents per month for the trash, twice a week trash pickup, four dollars and twenty-five cents per month for recycling. So the, the total cost, um, per residence is twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, um, per month. So, um, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-five residents. And then for recycling, we have three-hundred-and-twenty-five because we do, um, Elizabeth Landing. But then they also charge us then for our, um, six-yard cubic, um, dumpsters we have at Elizabeth Landing and that, uh, here at Town Hall. So, um, so anyway, it is, um.
So Mr. Barnes, the one oh-four includes everything, recycle.
Correct, correct.
Also like yard waste and the big bulk trash.
Correct. All of that is included.
Yeah.
So, okay. Uh, you know, now that I'm looking at it and adding things, it's not so, so bad.
Except for their service stinks.
Yeah. I was, I was comparing it to what I pay, um, at my property, which is about one oh-four on the guy. And I'm not even adding, um, all the additional expenses for having mattresses and, um, overage on the, and it's just dumpster service. That's, that's it, dumpster service. We do have recycle service, but not really. So.
I thought it was coming. I mean, uh, Mr. Bates, in the, in the pre-meeting that we had for the bidders, um, Mr. Bates certainly indicated, you know, if they wanted to do a good job for us, they, they will be had issues that we should reach out and, and we do, um, um, normally, so, uh, and Carolyn was, um, you know, discussed it too. So we encourage anyone, and, and obviously, if you hear, if you hear from residents or if you know problems and issues, please let us know and we'll try to get them, get them solved as, uh, quickly as we can. We do have, you know, the way the system works, if a person needs a new trash can, they come to the town, not to Bates. A lot of people don't realize that. Um, they, Bates supplies us with, um, ten or twelve, uh, carts at a time, and then we replace those out as people call in and indicate that they're broken. We have to, they trade us one for one, we give them back the broken one, they give us a new one. New ones. And of course, the town provides the recycle one, so we can replace those. We keep a supply of those on hand in the yard always, and, uh, we can replace those anytime. So if you see a broken trash can in, in a resident, front of a residence or, um, anything, let, let us know, because we, you know, we can happily go ahead and get it changed out even before somebody would say, um, they had a problem. But we certainly deal with the ones that we, the people call in for.
Alright, thanks. Any other budget questions? For this new budget? Okey-dokey. So the next one is the annual budget, this budget, amending this budget. And so I think, Mr. Barnes, you mentioned, um.
Yeah, if you want, and share, share the screen and I can bring that up and show everybody the changes there. Oh, uh, Rick needs to allow me to do that. You're good. Thank you. Now it's a matter of me. Okay, definitely, you're seeing what I'm seeing? With the budget?
Yes.
Am I seeing it? Yes, okay. Okay, so the things, the items involved are, are the changes. And, uh, so you can see, we're gonna get a little more real estate taxes this year than we anticipated. A little less personal property taxes, although we don't know that for sure because, um, Avery will be billing out all of the notices that come for the rest of May and June. And so I think that one will probably come out right on target, but I'm gonna be conservative and change it anyway. Um, our cable fees keep going down a little bit. People are relying more and more on the, on the Netflix and the, all of those great things. So we're gonna keep seeing that revenue decrease. Our red light camera just continues to decrease. Um, people know about it, obviously, and so it's working, I guess, to keep, um, keep people, um, out, so we're gonna see a little less of that. We are seeing lots more parking tickets and lots more vehicle releases, so we're adjusting the vehicle releases. Um, our interest is down. Rental inspections are down just a little bit. Some of the homes that were rentals are now not rentals, so that's a good thing. Our rec center rental is picking up. Uh, we're renting it out almost daily. And then donations, Sarah asked us to don't, uh, break out the donation line item from miscellaneous, so, so I did that. Um, so overall, our revenues are gonna change by about, uh, oh, and then I had to show our, ARPA funds that they came in, what they're coming in at. And so they're coming in as part of that eight-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand of that is ARPA funds. But because we had a very high budgeted number for grant dollars this year, that as the grants, um, as we get them completed or are done, is when we get paid. So we just keep rebudgeting every year for that. But anyway, so you can see, not much change, uh, in the revenues. And then from the expenditures, we just move the dollars around where we missed, either didn't budget appropriately or costs changed or, um, whatever that, something was unaccounted for that we didn't expect. Our community events, part of that is, I, I bumped that up a little more just, although we're not at our budget. I wanna continue to, um, encourage y'all to put some money aside for the one-hundred-year anniversary celebration. Um, so overall, our, the main change in general government was the social media, um, study. And so that's the big, biggest increase there in that particular, um, budget. It was about twenty-four thousand.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Uh, the one-hundredth year celebration, I thought we were going to do like a separate item for that.
I haven't set it up yet. Uh, you and I need to go and get that accomplished. And we haven't done that yet, but I have it, um, I have the check sitting here on my desk. And so, yes, there, I'll have it in next year's budget showing and reflecting that, that account.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Um, it's growing. We have, uh, we have eleven thousand dollars and it's continuing. I mean, each year we'll grow it until we get there. Um, Public Works had a few changes that I made. The biggest one there is in the, uh, addition of the new rain gardens as we keep adding to the landscaping contract.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Forgive me. I thought I was looking at, um, next year's. I knew I was looking at this year's, but when we talked about the one-hundredth year, I forgot this is this year's and not next year's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then in the police department, there's this, uh, went down just a little bit is that we adjusted some of the line items there. They had a little higher, uh, vehicle maintenance and uniform costs as, as we brought on all the new officers last year, right at the end of last fiscal year and right into this fiscal year. And then our capital is reflecting our ARPA funds, the new truck and, uh, Public Works, the new cruiser in, in the police department. And I, I, um, showed then our grant expenses. And so overall, our, our total, um, budget expenses are going down from what we originally budgeted down to twenty-one ninety-six, seven sixty-two. So good, good thing, good news thing there, but, uh, this just gets the funds in the right budget line items. I will answer any questions.
Any questions? You're, but you're, uh, I was gonna say you're budgeted, you're muted.
I'm also like fuzzy. The, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see where the, 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 um, the social media study that wasn't in the consulting contractual or it was?
No, it's in the contract services and line item. And, um, we didn't have it budgeted this year. It was an unexpected expenditure, so we moved the funds there to cover that.
Okay. Um. I guess I just didn't see, I must have not been looking when you scrolled past it.
Yeah, Jake, uh, this is an introduction, so please look at it. If you have specific questions, then call me and we'll go over them, uh, line by line or however, um, we need to, uh, before we approve it at, uh, the June meeting.
And then I guess I'm still curious and, and we don't have to, maybe, sort of give me a little tutorial. But why is it that the heading is twenty-twenty-one on that amendment? The written sort of motion or the written, I don't get that.
Where is that, uh, Hillary? I don't know.
It was one of the attachments. It says twenty-one.
Oh, I'm in ordinance, it was, uh, there was a typo in terms of that, the fiscal year. It should have been twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 I caught it. I caught it this evening when I was reviewing, but yes, I know what you're talking about now.
I get it, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That kind of makes everything fall in line now, right?
I pull up, uh, last year's amendment ordinance and then I just modify the years.
Didn't change it.
I missed that, that particular one, so.
Got it. So that motion is amending the current year, twenty-one.
Correct, twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Alright.
Current fiscal year. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You have another question? Nope, you're good, very good. So, um, next week, and if you have questions, definitely, um, call Town Hall and then next week we'll be able to just introduce this ordinance, vote on it. And woo-hoo. So the other, the next item is to designate the Black Eyed Susan um, as the town of Edmiston's flower and the Willow Oak as the town's official tree.
The, this is kind of, I mean, it's, it's a great thing to do just because, but this, as you know, we're in the America in Bloom, uh, program again this year. And one of their recommendations when they were here over the years was to, was to do this thing. And we just kept putting it off because we kind of wanted to designate the Japanese, uh, maple, but, uh, in memory of our, uh, Japanese-American mayor that was, but that's not a native tree to Maryland. And so, um, I didn't think it was probably appropriate to designate a non-native tree. So that's why we have Willow Oaks all up and down Decatur and it's a very solid foundation oak and it's native here, and so that's why we chose that. The Black Eyed Susan is the state flower and we have them everywhere in the rain gardens. And hopefully residents will do them, um, up to in preparation of the visit from the judges in June.
Thank you.
This is just, this is just a little fun, fun thing.
I think we like it. I know I do. Um, so the next item is the, uh, so right along the, the lines of our Willow Oak. Yeah, the Willow Oak is the, um, ordinance that will, um, add, it's modifying a chapter, um, for eighteen in our code book, adding the protection and monitoring of trees in the public right-of-way and the establishment of a tree board for the town of Edmiston. So it'll be, uh, establishing a tree board so that they can count, check out our trees.
Now that we have an inventory, uh, we thought it would be really good to get some volunteers. We've had some folks step forward that say they wanna help with that. And, um, we, we have four-hundred-and-fourteen trees in our public right-of-way and we just added one-hundred on Arbor Day. So we have five-hundred-and-fourteen trees in our inventory. They're all marked, tagged, and, um, uh, we can tell you what species they are, what condition they're in and where they're located. So, uh, the tree board will help, help with that. And then, and then the ordinance, uh, you'll get a draft, a different draft version. I sent this to Sue Ellen and, uh, she didn't like a lot of the wording, wording. So she'll reformat it, re, redo it. She didn't think we needed to get into the details of, uh, what the tree board's duties are. That's something they can determine for themselves. And obviously, um, that's cool. So she'll, we'll have that draft back before the, um, council meeting next week. And, um, if you have questions, then you can let us know. This is also a, a sustainable Maryland certification, um, uh, point. And it's also a great point with America in Bloom.
Alright.
I had questions, but should I just wait and see the next draft?
Yeah, this one was, uh, oh, I should say that this was Bethany, our CCC, um, member that, um, is with us this year. I, I gave her these tasks and this is her capstone. She, trees is her big, uh, thing that she, uh, coordinated the hundred tree planting and the, um, Arbor Day event and the fall planting and, uh, and so I kind of let her take it and run with it and knowing that we were gonna be, poor Hillary, I'm sorry.
Stop talking about trees.
Anyway, the, um, she really, really worked on this hard. And so I didn't wanna, I wanted to get it to you the way that she'd given it to me. And, and then now Sue Ellen will modify and change it and bring it back. And if we don't get it passed until, um, July, that's okay, but we'd like to have it in place before the June twenty-third day.
Does this mean, um, the way that Hillary is suffering, that a lot of our trees that have been planted in the town are male?
Pollen, I don't know.
Are male, as they say, uh, male trees give off more pollen.
Hmm.
Our tree board might be able to help with that.
There you go.
Yeah.
John, I will know.
So keeping in that line, so is everybody okay with that? With that, um, revision? Great, 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 great. And so keeping in line with that, um, what do you think about pesticides? So we're gonna talk about pesticides and, um, introduce an ordinance, um, to regulate the use of pesticides in the town. So we think about that.
I have a lot of questions on this one also.
Me too.
This one, Sue Ellen had a heart attack and so, and I had a heart attack. And so, uh, we, we're not interested in, in regulating pesticides for private, uh, homes or private property. So what, uh, we're gonna be coming back with, uh, after, uh, Bethany's proposal here is, look at her, um, is, uh, some kind of policy resolution on how we deal with pesticides and chemicals on our public land that we manage and, and, uh, control. So, um, Sue Ellen said, stand down. Um, we'll bring back a correct one. And, and you know, obviously, we don't wanna get into the other side of it because the state has regulations, the county has regulations. And then in trying to enforce those regulations, I'm sure chief would agree. We don't need the code officers trying to tell people what to put on their lawns or how to control their lawn, so.
Yes. I totally agree. Um, any other comments on that? So I don't know if we Okay. I don't know if, um, will we be ready to, um, talk about awarding the bid to Bates? You think next, um, next week?
Yeah. I mean, they submitted their bid and the proposal and, um, it's just a matter of you all accepting it and going back with the contract. We'll bring the contract, um, you'll approve it, subject to developing a contract with, uh, Sue Ellen and them. We're basically doing the same contract. They proposed a couple of amended changes to the, um, contract.
Is everybody good with that? Alright, so that means next month, next week, we'll be awarding it to them. Unfortunately, we didn't get anyone else to put in the bid, so, cool. They've gotten better, but, eh, yeah. So, um, let's talk about, um, Buchanan Street, Deep Pie. Um, Councilmember Chester, you want to leave the discussion, question?
Oh, well, yeah, I wanted to just highlight that, um, I know that the chief, um, wrote that kind of long report highlighting a lot of the concerns we were all having with the condition of the businesses and the condition of just sort of the physical properties of all those businesses. And then we all got that email that, uh, DPIE was both, um, first we got the email, I guess, that they were gonna have this big, um, blighted business, like, uh, I don't know what they, like a blitzkrieg, where they were gonna just look and really do a lot of outreach to blighted businesses and commercial properties. And so I thought that seemed really timely. And then also the, um, that kind of, it's like the municipalities in the know, um, session was Deep Pie this month. And so I called in and a lot of what they were focused on in that meeting was, um, primarily for residents and, um, a real focus on home inspections, fraudulent home inspections, not, um, like kind of illegitimate sort of fly-by-night home inspections. Um, and then there was quite a bit around, um, uh, licenses for doing construction permits, uh, rather not licenses, but permits and things. That was the bulk of what they were talking about. But when they opened it up to the Q and A, I asked about their blighted commercial property extravaganza, um, whatever, it's, I'm, I'm just totally blanking on the word they used for this like big week where they were gonna focus on that. And they said that they were gonna go out and do a lot of outreach to businesses. Um, and it wasn't necessarily a big enforcement push as much as it was a big kind of outreach push. Uh, but then they asked if there were some businesses of concern specifically. And so when I, if all the Q and A was in the chat, so when I typed in the businesses on Buchanan in Edmiston and then some of the, um, adjacent businesses on Tanglewood and Hyattsville, like two of the people from Deep Pie were like, oh, yeah, 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 we know all about that. So, um, sadly, I guess these businesses have kind of a bad reputation. So they said they would probably come out. I, um, uh, didn't follow up. They said they're gonna send the email and then I'd be able to see exactly who it was that said they would come out. I wanna say woman's name was Valerie, but I'm totally wrong. Um, but I think it seems really timely that we're really concerned about these businesses. They're doing this big effort and attention, at least in the next couple of weeks in mid-May on blighted, um, businesses. And one of the things, um, you know, the chief was making some recommendations and just noticing, um, some of the issues around parking for customers as well as just, you know, like the general storage of the cars, which are things we've really been complaining about as well. And I remember that when we were complaining about that maybe a year ago, um, one of the problems is that it's Deep Pie that gives these licenses to these businesses and they don't seem to regulate or ask about parking. Like, is there adequate parking for your customers? Is there adequate parking or storage, um, if your business, you know, involves having cars? And I know that Betsy had mentioned, we know, when she was running a business that sometimes they did ask about customer parking, but certainly now they're not, um, or they're not verifying it if they are. Um, so I just think that's something that we should be raising with them is, you know, our concerns that they're not, maybe they're not considering all of the factors when they're issuing these kind of business licenses in this particular area that doesn't have a lot of storage. Um, and certainly doesn't have a lot of customer parking. So I'd be happy to help follow up and make calls, uh, during the week or I don't know if that's something that, like, Rod, would you take that on or would you prefer that one of us do that? And I'm happy to sort of follow up and just see if they'll. I was thinking it'd be great to like walk along with them, like if they come and check it out. Like, I would love for some of us to be there and walking along.
If I could, um, Mr. Barnes. Um, and so this discussion was had, um, uh, last week after the Deep Pie, um, communities in the know. Um, we had a all-mayors meeting. And, um, all of us have, share the same concern. So what we are doing, we're reaching out to them to have them come to us. And, um, I'd be happy to have you in on that as well. Um, because all of us have a concern with, um, Deep Pie, their response time, um, their investment, uh, all of that. Um, Deep Pie, they're, um, trying to get through that red tape is sometimes difficult. And if you don't know someone, uh, you might not get what you need. And even with them doing the blitz, um, we, get in touch with us. You know, we, we're available. So, I mean, yes, there are some, some businesses that definitely need them to come out and kind of give them the warning, the red sticker, whatever it is. But, um, Deep Pie needs to answer, um, such as permitting. Um, so much construction can't go on because you can't get them to, to provide the permit. Or, um, we're dealing with that with Wagner, is that correct? to provide the permit, or um, we're dealing with that with uh, Wagner, is that correct? Uh, Mr. Barnes, we're dealing with that. You know, they, they, they do their part, and then there's another piece of uh, red tape that they have to take care of. And so, you know, you have to have those connections, and we've contacted county council members and so on. So yeah, um, Hillary, I'd be happy to include you in on that conversation uh, as well, and hopefully Deep Pie does come out. Hopefully they let us know.
I just think it'd be great if, if some of us could be there when they're out and like kind of walk with them and.
So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's great. So um, anything else concerning Deep Pie or? Oh, did you? Did you?
He saw her. Is there any way, Rod, that when we do our business permits, you know, for license for businesses, that we can follow up with them and also ask, you know, how many employees, how many, you know, customers do you expect to have? And make sure they have adequate parking before we give them a business license?
Is that a compliance, that the compliance department? Um, that be with Chief?
Part of the code office, so it would be the, under the direction of the chief. Uh, Sue Ellen could also, I see is on, so she also could, could indicate whether that's a, a something we could tie to our business licensing issuance.
Cause I, I know, when I rented, okay, when I rented on Buchanan Street, they were very specific, they, cause I had a total of five parking spaces plus a space for my dumpster, which had to be out back. And out of the five spaces, one of them had to be handicapped. And they said, how many employees you have that would be working in the building? You know, not on the road, how many customers do you expect to have? And I know a couple of people that tried to get, we're in a building where I was at, they were denied because they were having too many employees that were gonna be inside the building. And customers, they said, you don't have, you have, you don't have enough room for your vehicles and customers, and you didn't have a designated, you know, handicap space.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Chief.
It, it had been my experience that a part of the package for you to apply for a license for certain kind of businesses, especially auto repair, you had to demonstrate that you had adequate parking, and you had to provide a form that showed where the parking was in relation to the front door or the back door, but you know, those areas that you're talking about now, that five thousand block of Buchanan, they can't be showing any parking because there are clearly not enough spaces in front of the building or behind it that would accommodate the number of customers they would take in a, a, a particular day. So, you know, today, I don't actually know if they're showing it, but I know in the past it was a requirement.
Before a business gets a use and occupancy permit from the county, they have to file a site plan.
Yep.
And it will be designated where the parking goes. Uh, some businesses pre-existed the requirements, and so they don't have to comply with them. But otherwise, they do, and that's a, an enforcement, unfortunately, it's zoning code enforcement issue, again, that the county has to come out on. So if you know, however, that their site plan requires a certain number of spaces and they're not providing them, then I think you could decline to issue the building permit, or I'm sorry, a, a license, business license, uh, until they comply.
Thank you.
I think the use and occup- occupancy permit actually has the number of spaces designated right on it of what they're supposed to have.
Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay. I know I've seen him with it. Yeah, I've seen him with it on.
Sometimes they're inconsistent, but there, there will be a site plan that's been approved for every business that's out there, and it'll show where they're supposed to be.
Something's broken then, in that process.
It's either something's broken or someone lied about how they're using the buildings, because uh, when Sue Ellen said site plan, yet we did have to have a site plan. And every, parking planning had to approve it. You know, along with, you know, our U and O when they came out to inspect, I mean, we had to we had to show them our sign for the handicap parking and the markings on the uh, the pavement of where customer parking was and employee park.
Okay.
And I, I know Chief and I talked about, and I don't think it's our responsibility as the town to help them, you know, with, I mean, if, if they got five wrecked cars there, why should we be helping them find spaces for their customers to park or their employees? You know, our streets are, you know, our streets are not for them to come parking.
Absolutely.
They knew what they were getting into.
All right. Okay. As a matter of fact, I saw Eric over on Buchanan this evening, working for a long time, so.
Right. So.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Chief, and, and you may. So if there isn't anything else concerning what um, Ms. Chester brought up, Chief, you can, if you have anything else, um, please, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna say, um, Sue Ellen shared what the uh, uh, county requirement is as it relates to these businesses. So the next step is, is it only enforcement in terms of um, a, a site in the business? Or, you know, a moratorium on the number of shops that come in, or, you know, right now it's just enforcement, and we're towing cars, we're putting tickets on cars, and uh, it just continues, and it's been this way for the last at least two years or so. And uh, I'm just, you know, can we suspend or revoke a license for non-compliance with the uh, reason they were given the license in the first place? I guess this is for uh, Sue Ellen. If we look at their uh, paperwork when they first applied, and we find out they're not doing what they said they would, can we suspend their ability to um, work that business?
I'd have to see the specifics, but there are certainly ways to suspend a business license. Uh, you'd have to give them notice first, obviously, cause what you want is compliance. You want them to do well, but, and if they comply, then fine. If it's, it depends on what they said they're gonna do and um, how much in the law, the law requires, but like I said, I, we might be able to get a stretch out also to say you're non-compliant with county zoning, you're causing a great deal of issue in the neighborhood, and you're a nuisance. And so we're not gonna allow you to uh, do business and create this nuisance, and you gotta fix it.
Sue Ellen, I know, I know down there, there's businesses that are painting cars. There's, uh, and they don't have a permit or a license to have to paint those cars in there. For those, can we shut them, you know, put a stop water or, or temporarily shut them down? Because it's no painting.
Yeah, if they don't have a town permit, and, you know, you have to be able to prove it up.
Okay, well, if they have a town permit but not for painting cars.
Right. If you can prove up they're painting the cars, I mean, it can't be just somebody said so.
No.
Seen it.
Yeah. I've seen it, and when you.
Yeah.
You see the fumes coming out of the, the business.
Well, what's even better is having a photograph. Then there's no argument about it was there, no it wasn't, if it was, you know, we have a picture. And so we don't have arguments about that.
Our, our code compliance officer has cited a number of businesses for painting cars without being properly licensed to do so.
Okay.
So we're aware that they need that, that um, you know, that particular license to paint. So he's uh, he's aware of that.
Well, to me, we should, we should shut them down because they continue.
So stop work order until they come to compliance.
Well, we might have to shut, make them shut their doors because as they continue on, I mean, Eric and Anna can go down there and cite them and, you know, stop them, but as soon as they leave, Chief, you know, they're right back to painting in there. It's all, it's like every time, you guys did a great job clearing Buchanan Street, but two hours later, a few of the rascals, they're back out there doing it again. Double parking, triple pa- parking. So my question is, can we, if we warn them once, if we come back a second time and they're still painting, can we temporarily shut them down until they comply?
Well, can you? Yes. And then it's gonna be a matter of somebody takes court action or they don't. Um, when you're citing them for it, do you ask for an abatement order?
Okay.
Cause the, when the city, when the town cites, should ask for an abatement order so that it can come to trial, and the judge can say, don't do that anymore until you have a U and O that allows you to. Or a business license that allows you to cut it out. I would try to get the county out there too.
Right. Okay.
If it is a county. You might, if, um, you know, talk to your county council member too. Even get her to get people out there.
Right. All right, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All righty. Did you have anything else, um, Chief?
No, no, that's all.
Good. All right. Uh, Mr. Barnes, did you have anything else for us this evening?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. Um, so if any council member, Ms. Chester, Ms. McCully, Mr. Johnson?
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, excellent. So um, we can, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Avery, you did?
I said, I, Betsy, I have something.
Okay.
Walking through the town, Avery and I have been walking together. Cars on the side streets, they're doing twenty-five, which I think is kind of some, it's, it's, it's too fast. Is there any way we can look into lowering the speed limit to the side streets and even on Decatur Street? Decatur Street at twenty and the side streets down to fifteen?
The standard uh, speed limit is thirty. If you have historically before a certain time, and I, I forget when it was, in the seventies, I think, could be before that. If you historically have had like a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, they'll let you keep that. If you want to reduce it any further, you have to do a traffic engineering study to show why that needs to happen.
Okay. Cause I, I know some of our side streets, we do have ten to fifteen miles on our lane. So if we have to do, if we want to do all the other streets, we have to get a study done?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. We probably didn't have the study done when we put it to ten or fifteen.
Well, I wouldn't. If, if it was a certain, if it was a certain miles, miles per hour um, by a certain date, and like I said, I think it was in the seventies, it could have been before then, we were able to keep it, but after that, that.
Can we look at it? No. The streets really need.
Riverdale Park has twenty, twenty miles an hour with speed cam.
Twenty-five, yeah.
No, twenty.
Yeah, you're right. You are correct. I'm sorry. On Riverdale Road, it is twenty-two.
Same thing. It's the same thing. Now, they either had that before, or they had an engineering study to support it.
Right.
Or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so if no one else has any other questions or concerns, I'd like to adjourn this meeting and uh, go into a closed session, and we'll adjourn from there, the closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second.
That's to, uh, okay.
Go into the closed session.
Kidoki. And that was seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, so.
Do we have to lull off and come back in?
No. Um, Mr. Gray takes care of it.
Oh.
So everybody, other than counsel and Ms. Ferguson, good night.
Good night all.
All right.